Okay, he says we're ready now. On record.
Let me call to order the work session of the Lincoln City Council. This is August 1st, 3:30. And we have with us the Cascades West Council of Governments, COG, as we use that acronym now and then. And if we could just go around for voice and introduce yourself.
Rick Mark, City Council.
Kathy Steer, City Recorder.
Ron Chandler, City Manager.
Fred Bolzmann, Executive Director of Council of Governments.
Rachel Maukees, Deputy Director, Council of Governments.
Diane Kooz, I'm Councilor.
Judy Casper, Councilman.
And Dick Anderson. Thank you, Fred and Rachel, coming over. I know you're making the circuit as they say, what, we started in May? That's time to apply where the tail end or anything.
You're at the beginning.
You were just waiting for good weather at the beach.
You're our first, your first in us. I was like, tell everyone my first in them.
Judy actually is our representative and attends, and Chester Norikas before her.
And Susan.
Oh, yeah, Susan Wonka, in between, you're right. So, thank you. So, we've tried to have good representation. We're Lincoln City as a member and has been. Dick, I know you, I think originally when we talked, just wanted to get together, get an update, what's going on, vice versa. I would, if you wouldn't mind sharing with us, you know, more about the COG, what you do. We're new as council members and don't have a full understanding, because there may be services that we aren't aware of that you provide. We know when you sneak into Depot Bay or Walport or something, you have financial apply, financial services. You serve us our loans from Urban Mule and economic development and the trans, oh, got it, transportation half.
You've got it.
I know you've bought it.
We're done. Quick meeting, we can go.
So, with that, you know, it just free flowing if we can. You know, we're good till about seven.
I think I've dinner reservations, if you guys want to try it. We're good till seven, too. I hear there's beer in your patty. Or there's, oh, wait, this is recorded.
Ladies are gonna be gone, but.
We can continue the meeting, whether the women's roundtable, we'd be happy to do that. So, thank you, and thank you for your service. And Lincoln City's great, I think, time with us and membership, and Rod has been fantastic. We also help the city county managers on the coast host their meetings. So, it gives us a complete three-county kind of view of day-to-day strategic tactical conversations with our communities. And Lincoln City has just been great to work with. Chester was my first board member, and you and I go back some ways, we've known each other for a while, so it's really a pleasure to be here with the council. Again, Judy, thank you for your, for your time.
Hi.
Deanna Hinton.
Driving up the caboose.
Just walking wounded.
Now my cane today.
Tough council meeting?
Yeah, it's a rough one.
So, I'm Fred Bolzmann, I'm the COG Executive Director.
I'm Rachel Maukees, I'm the Deputy Director. Nice to meet you, Councilor.
So, we're just doing a drop-in and a hello, and what can we do more together, and maybe like an overview of where we are. And I was just actually thanking the mayor and Councilmember Casper for their service to the council. I think you've been members since we were formed, so that's since 1968. So, councils of governments, if I could start there, or maybe even a little bit about ourselves, and so you know who we are and why we're here. I've been with Council of Governments, Oregon Cascades West Council of Governments, since 2014. Prior to that, I spent 17 years in Washington DC. I was the Executive Director of the Association of Councils of Governments for the whole country. So, it just gave me a perspective on how councils work and why they're important. And back in the day, I call it the day, I call it the Great Awakening, back in the late 60s, when the federal government was starting to form regional programs around transportation and air quality and water and housing, the National League of Cities and the National Association of Counties said, you know, we have to have some way of addressing this, so we should probably work to create regional solutions. Let's think about these voluntary associations of governments. And that's where we came from. So, we're one of the oldest, we've been around for almost 50 years. And have become, when those federal, so when those federal programs are authorized, either by law or through statute, or because you want us to do that, then we become those organizations. So, when you mention transportation, for example, we're federally mandated transportation planning organizations, we're the Economic Development District, we're the Area Agency on Aging. And those are natural places to put these large programs. You put them in councils of governments, because they're gonna serve you and they're gonna serve you regionally. There's six of us in Oregon, Metro being the largest, and then it goes down the valley, down to Road Valley, so there's us, Salem, Metro, there is Eugene, there's Road Valley, and then there's one abandoned Redneck, which is the largest in terms of its geographic reach and serves fourteen counties.
Does this sum up the story?
No. Actually, a lot of Oregon, that's a good question. So, most states have wall-to-wall COG coverage. Oregon does not. Matter of fact, Oregon has disbanded two of its councils of governments, which really emptied our footprint, it really narrowed our geographic reach. One was dissolved last year in the gorge.
Because?
Bad politics, probably some bad management, kind of maybe misunderstandings among county officials about how things should run, and.
So, is that a county issue or a college issue?
Since we're being recorded, I'll be as gentle as possible. It's probably a lot of issues just came into play at once. I, I think in the gorge, as you know, the farther you get away from Portland, the more the demographics and geographics change, and I don't think there was a lot of eye-to-eye acknowledgement of what a council should do. And they probably were running some programs they shouldn't have, couldn't figure out how to get rid of them. And it was sad, Oregon's the only state in the country that's lost councils of governments. The one in the southern part, Douglas, Kooz, Curry, had a council of governments, I think, until the 80s, and that was disbanded for financial reasons. So, we're holding on, we're not gonna go. We're growing, like Lankog and our compatriots to the north, because your problems are becoming more complex and becoming harder to handle at the, at the local level. When we band together regionally and think about how do we, how do we deal with some of these issues, this is where we come into play. So, for those of you that don't have a lot of COG experience, we're your staff, we're an extension of your staff. I work for the mayor, I work for the council, I work for Rod, we all, we all are here at your convenience. So, you ask us to do something, we'll try to figure out how to do it. You ask us to test something, we'll try to figure out how to test it. And the best, I think, example of how to capture what COGs do is anything a local government can't do, shouldn't do, or doesn't want to do, is what we should do.
But we have a list, Fred.
We'll take it. So, an interesting story, just to kind of encapsulate it, is back in the late 70s in Denver, there weren't a lot of tall buildings, right? Think about it, the west was very short, sorry, right? So, somebody needed an elevator inspector. Well, maybe this other jurisdiction needed an elevator, but nobody wanted to hire the elevator inspector. So, they said, well, we've got this council of governments, why don't they hire the elevator inspector, and then we'll just use them? And that was one of the first examples of shared services, where the Denver Council, Dr. COG, the Denver Regional Council of Governments, has an elevator inspection service for local government. Because at that time, no one really needed Medicaid, for example, you know, that's not something that you, a local government, especially a small one, could run. That's what we do. So, when the state regionalized Medicaid, we were asked if we wanted to assume that role, and we did, because we could provide service across the three counties with the same footprint as the CCO, Samaritan, the same footprint as other regional organizations, and provide local government staff service. So, your constituents, we deal with directly, because it would be just too much for any local government to handle. And sometimes you'll get mad about something, and you'll say, you just need to do this. And we will.
So, Fred, along those lines, I'm curious if you've had any inquiries into this. So, one of the hot topics was an issue that was not addressed by the legislature, is building inspections.
Yes.
That's exactly what we're on.
So, yes, so as Ron knows and all of you know, there was a bill that said, you can't, you can't third-party building inspections. This is what killed the COG in the gorge, was building inspections. So, yes, we could, now, I believe, because I think we have favorable outcomes, we could third-party building inspection. But it wasn't clear that we couldn't do that anyway, because we are a local government. We have the authority of a local government, so, yes.
Have you had any inquiries from other cities about that?
No. And we've tried not to, because I know it can be a very local issue, but it's something that we could do. Building inspection has not.
Well, for example, Corvallis is sharing their building inspector across a couple of different cities in the valley.
I'm just thinking that in one, in the county, we've got, we've got sufficient-sized cities, like Joseph and Sauce, and, and this is a, this is a big issue, I'm trying to figure out how to deal with it.
Something we love to talk about. Toledo just brought up wastewater treatment, folks, they're having a hard time with hiring, could we, could we house that? Yeah, we could do that. Those are conversations we can have. You mentioned finance, staffing, we can do that. Not that the city needs it, but sometimes our cities do, and we'll step in and help with our staff. We'll do it cheaper, and hopefully better than the private sector. And we're not there to put the private sector out of business, but you're rest assured that you can fire us quickly, and you can just be unhappy with us, and we'll be more responsive. So, those are some of the things that I think councils of governments can do to help local governments. So, I don't know if you guys have any questions?
Just buildings. The building inspector, I could see everything.
Yeah, that's right. How we would approach this is to say, either our board member, council member, Casper, or our city manager would bring it up and say, hey, is anybody interested? And then we would have the conversation, and if it costed, we'd have to figure out how to hire people, what, what kind of agreements, but if we have enough impetus, we would do it.
See, there's two parts of it, there's, it's critical. You can have a third-party building inspector, as long as you have a certified building official. And that seems to be where we're all getting in trouble, is the certified building official. And, and I think right now, the county is the only, is the only one that has that.
And I don't know enough.
So, it's a building official, not the building, the actual inspector?
Yeah, somebody, it can't be, it can't be a contracted employee that is the one that finally stamps and says, this is, this is the way it is. It has to be an employee, but that employee, it doesn't have to be the building inspector, it is the building official. And right now, that, the county, I believe, is the only one that has it. We've been looking at, what does it take to create a building official that's able to do that?
So, might be an option.
That would be a good one for us to bring up next, I think it's next week when we have our city manager lunch and talk about that. And that's assuming that, you know, there, the county one doesn't have the capacity. Right. I mean, that's what we're anticipating, is they don't have the capacity to handle, right, all of us, to do it, so we're trying to add the capacity.
Right. Yeah, so we would say, talk to the county first, and then if the county would say, well, we have a word tapped, and can we assist the county or you directly?
Yeah.
And then, if not, can we park somebody out here to do it, to help?
The 13th is our next city county. Goes to.
Okay.
So, we're already in a business end of what we do. So, councils can be planning agencies, service delivery agencies, or combinations, and we're a combination, and we're one of the few in the country that's like that. There aren't any really other causes that provide direct medical services, Medicaid. They're either like transportation agencies, or community development agencies, or they might have an area agency on aging, but very few of them have our authority, which is to provide direct medical service. So, that makes us large, it makes us sustainable, and it also increases our footprint, but it also provides that level of service, and then gives us more capacity. So, they're called Type B transfers in Oregon, and there's four of us, Lankog, ourselves, North Best Senior Visibility Services, and Mutton Town County. We actually have Medicaid authority under the state. So, any one of your citizens or residents who needs eligibility determinations or case management, they're working with us, and that's through our community office. So, one of the things, what services could we provide, if you ever need support, if you hear about, if you hear about potential abuse, calls, we can help you with that. We're also the Adult Protective Services Agency, we'll do the investigations.
I was just reading your.
Oh, you got that?
How, how many employees do you have?
160.
Okay, okay.
We have a main Albany office, we have a Morgals office, and then we have a local community office.
You're doing something with PERS, too?
We're being hit with PERS, yes, like you are.
Yeah, but in a larger way.
We're bringing the communities together to talk about what PERS effect will have on your budgets for the next, immediate and five years, what's it gonna do to your staffing, and then where could we value-added to help?
I think that would be a significant discussion.
Yeah.
Could I ask you a question about that?
Yeah, awesome.
We were told, I think it was two budget sessions ago, that we could pay down our accounts, let's say, up to 25%, and it was just kind of not, you know, the door hasn't opened to do that yet, we can't. That's what last we heard, is that we weren't able to do that, is that accurate?
Yeah, the, so the legislature adopted, and it was, wasn't this session, it was the one before that. And, and, but the rules had to be established by bureaucracy, and they never got established. And so, it's just out there.
So, I'm just kind of curious, my question then about that is, what other communities are, are doing? Are they thinking that's a good idea, to pay it down when that window opens, that we can do that?
That's a complex question. So, we, we have a PERS reserve, we pay it down. So, we text her plus money, so we put it in a prepaid account. City of Corvallis, I think, actually bonded this years ago, and did a prepaid accounts, they've covered their PERS increases for, I think, the next two years, but they have like $1.3 million in the bank just for PERS. Some communities are not doing anything, they're just absorbing in budget, they just, Albany is doing a series of budget cuts to deal with PERS. So, I think it's all, it's all, yeah, it depends on what your rates are, how many retirees you have, yeah.
I'm just kind of curious, what's the chatter out there about?
Yeah, the chatter is, help us, legislature, figure this out. Can we prepay? Can we get the credits? Can you provide some relief? So, last time I was dealing with legislators on this, we expressed the fact that universities, councils of governments, and special districts, since we don't have general, general fund authority, when PERS hits us, it hits us one, two, three, five times, because we can't raise revenue. Your are revenue, or contracts are revenue. No, you know, we'll, you know, we'll help you fix it. There was no fix, like, for you. So, I don't know where your, where your budget is, but, you know, ours is gonna be $300,000 every year for the next three years. So, it's a.
Yeah, it's a big.
It is, and it goes up about 10% each year, although this year, 20% every two years, although this year went up higher than 20%, which.
Why?
I don't know, we're in a, we're in a assumption that it could not, it was never, no more than 20%, we got hit with higher than that.
Because your liability, your liabilities were higher?
We haven't heard the answer. We, we asked that two months ago, and we have not heard an answer on the matter.
Maybe you should have some beer, that's bullshit. Be nice to them, they might lower your rates.
Well, we talked to legislators.
Yeah, that doesn't help. Yeah, ours are 22, ours were 22%.
Okay. The thing that we have been doing in order to, in order to try to absorb it easier, is that we've looked at 10% increases each year, instead of 5% every other year. It's time to think it's less than below than any one year, but in the off-years, it also created a little bit of a surplus, and we've been able to draw.
Yeah, it's, it's devastating for the state. Between our housing problems and PERS, it's amazing, and our budget shortfall, the state's still solving.
You have a pilot program that I'm pretty excited about, I think it would be really appropriate at this time, Standby Meet.
Okay, you want to jump in?
Can you?
You're ready to go.
Yeah, I'd like to, I want to hear more about it.
So, one of the things that happens with council governments has been a sandbox, where you can test ideas. Sometimes somebody comes up with an idea, and they throw it at us, and they say, go figure it out. And this recently happened, so Benton County, one of their commissioners was at a conference and heard about a financial empowerment program in Delaware, and said, boy, I like this, let's see if we can do something here. And we got a phone call, and she said, guess what you're gonna do? I said, we did it. So, we went to Delaware, and we did a three-day peer exchange with these folks, and it's called the Standby Meet Program. 10 years ago?
About seven to eight years ago was when they started, close to 10.
So, they identified that Delaware has some significant residential issues with financial empowerment. So, people weren't saving enough, people had too much debt, and their credit scores were too low. So, through an initiative between the state and United Way, they went to some big philanthropic organizations, Annie KC Foundation, and Kaufman, and some big banks, and said, we gotta deal with this, and they said, absolutely, we'll help you. So, now, eight years later, they're funded at about $2.5 million a year, all private investment. And over the course of this 10 years, they've had 110,000 clients, they're consumers, that come through this program. As long as you want, as often as you need. And combined, it's been, per individual, roughly a 64-point score change for credit, total of like $120 million something in savings, and like $100 million in debt reduction across the state. So, we went, came back to Benton County, and said, this is what we found out. They said, great, we're gonna give you money to launch a pilot in Benton County. Well, so what they did is, they said, we're gonna give you money to find more money to launch a pilot, so that's what we're doing. So, essentially, we're gonna purchase and just take Delaware's model and put it on top of Benton County, and see where it goes. And if it's successful, then we're gonna say, does the rest of the region want to do this?
I'm sorry, what does it do for these people?
So, it's coaching, so it's actual financial coaching.
So, it's a really interesting model, so there's a lot of financial empowerment programs out there. You go to a class here, you go to a class there. The difference that with this model, and part of the reason why it's had so much success is it's very much one-on-one individual coaching. So, these coaches are embedded with community partners. For example, you embed somebody with a Head Start organization locally, and so then they can do one-on-one appointments. Each coach takes on about 40 different clients, and they will mentor them through all stages. The first stage is getting a budget together, so most people, a lot of people don't have budgets. The second is working with them to increase their savings. Then the third one is actually doing the increasing of credit scores, and they can do a number of other things, such as helping people into housing, help them go to school, there's different parts of the program. But they embed them, they embed the coaches in these local organizations, and that's part of what makes it such a huge success. So.
So, our first test is gonna be with the school districts. And so, there's, these are families with young children who need some financial coaching. They have embedded coaches with veterans, they have with seniors, English is a second language. And what they find is, so for example, they have a coach at a food bank, someone shows up, and I really need a food box this month, and I'll say, great, well, you know, I'll get you a food box, but why? Well, I just couldn't make my bills. And so, they'll sit down with them and say, okay, well, how do we, how do we negotiate out of this? Because this shouldn't be your standard of living. And they find that often, two, three, four months of coaching, they've stopped using some social services, they're on their way to financial, to the financial goals. But interestingly, we met some, we met some consumers, we met a business guy who had lost everything, something happened, I think he was, he was from Puerto Rico, and it wasn't the storms, it was something prior. He says he was a millionaire, he came to the mainland, and he had to rebuild his whole financial portfolio, like, he went through the program. And we met some older women who'd recently been divorced, and did have any assets, went through the program, and rebuilt their finances, students, people who want to get into housing, people who need jobs, or can make a job. So, we found that in the three counties, we have a lot more people than we think that are just on the margins. They're not impoverished, but they're close, and some financial work can help them stabilize.
For in Benton County alone, so are you guys familiar with the ALIS statistics, though? It's asset limited, income constrained, employed, so you have people who are at or below the poverty level, and then you have the working poor, essentially, and so that's the ALIS level. And so, in Benton County alone, combining those who are at or below poverty and at or below ALIS, it's about 44% of the population, actually. And we have similar numbers throughout Lynn, Benton, and Lincoln Counties. I think Lynn and, Lynn and Lincoln are actually a little bit higher.
I bet, that's higher.
Yeah, yeah. And so then, we're gonna be, the first part of the program is sort of focused on targeting, within that, that demographic, the families with children, because that's right now where some of the funders are, who are the most interested in, in spreading the program.
So, kind of related to that, I bore these people, but are beginning with mentioning that I'm on the board of a nonprofit that provides childcare, daycare, they're not Depot Bay. And the state now has just, I don't know, the new school or some sort of funding that this legislature just passed, that's gonna provide some significant money for schools and, I think, childcare programs? And I'm just wondering if there's something I can do to, and this, you have money a little bit regionally, and down at Neighbors for Kids, we're wondering, ooh, there's, and we talked to Representative Gunberg, and, you know, okay, there's a new fund coming, how do we tap into that? And I don't know what the mechanism is.
So, we don't do education? Not that we wouldn't.
Well, you call it education, or you call it, because it certifies.
Family.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's daycare, it's, it's, we provide a really modest rate for working parents, and, you know, part of our, in the back of our minds, we like to say that, by being able to do this, we're, we're helping people work, which helps them get housing, you know? So, we see that our program is fundamental.
Let me do this, so, we have a community services program, which is all of our work that's not Medicaid related, so Meals on Wheels, veterans, other programs like that. Let's have my director come, and then talk to you about this. We, so we don't have any child, we have one close program about foster grandparents and kids, so we don't have a lot of bandwidth when talking about education. It could be under financial empowerment, but there's a lot of other players in the field on education, they're learning, community services consortium.
Should we gather all their, or they got money, Neighbors for Kids?
Yeah, so, we're somewhat cautious about when we step in, but we'd like to talk, we could talk to you more about whether we have a role to play for you.
Absolutely. I'll send you a, I'll send you an email.
Yeah, we'll have Jennifer, Jennifer, for later, for later, visit and see if there's something that we can do. And that, that's how we expand services.
Because we, we see the childcare piece is, we put it under economic development, we see it hindering our, our growth on the coast.
I guess not.
And there are many nonprofit, Neighbors for Kids comes to my, many nonprofit organizations around the county that provide this sort of care when we're the other, but they're not tapped into. Neighbors for Kids relies on generosity, you name it, some, every big foundation in Oregon hands out money, and we get a lot of it, but they always want to know, how are you gonna sustain what you're doing? And we go, and our answer is, well, we're just gonna come back to you, and they don't really want to hear that, so.
Having been in nonprofits myself, I'm very familiar with that. I'm sure that sometimes the answer is, guess what? Yeah, give us more money, that's how we're sustainable, we'll manage our money wisely.
Meals on Wheels, and stuff, because we participate and have the center, and from all I know, it's well-used and it's appreciated. Turnover staff is always staffing issues management, I'm not surprised. That is, is there anything unique in that area that we should know, as it's ongoing? Anything that's gonna throw a wrench in the system?
Just one quick thing that I would say, because one of the, that is one of the ones that we're most well-known for when I talk to people about our community, and just to remind everyone that there's no income restrictions on people taking, participating in Meals on Wheels, that it is open to anyone 65 or older, and then the tribe that's 55 or older. So, it's just an interesting fact, I think some of us have a perception that it's just for those who can't, can't afford, but that's not the case, and it really provides more than a hot meal, it's that socialization, that connection. You know, our team has made a number of calls, our, especially out here on the coast. especially out here on the coast, where they've found consumers on the home delivery routes who have been in medical trouble, and we've been the first responders there to call 911. So it's a really good service, and I would encourage those to use it.
Did we cover Stand By Me yet?
Yeah.
Okay. So...
How long will we, how long will the pilot be before you decide, "Yeah, you're game?"
We have 15 months to find $400,000. And at that point, then we'll do the pilot, probably another two years. But it doesn't preclude us from doing something else. So, for example, Lincoln City was sitting on $500,000, we would start a pilot.
And the $500,000 is to pay for those coaches?
Coaches, yeah. They're actual coaches. You embed, we pay for the coaches to be embedded in communities. And they're trained, they have performance reviews, they have to have caseloads, it's like a case manager for financial empowerment.
I mean, I've lost my clarity for saying this, but if you guys wanted to participate sooner rather than later, there is the benefit of going with the first wave of the pilot, because then you could get a lot of, you'll get a lot of feedback either way, but you get to learn in the program with us. It provides us with more data points to really see if it's really successful as well. So sometimes there's a little bit of a lower cost threshold if you join in with Save Benton County, if you wanna pilot it here as well.
So, we're not actually asking, it's just...
No, so just saying, there's lots of opportunities.
Every coach is about 70,000, the training and administration. But that's the success of the program, is that you have a coach who does it. So, anyway.
Well, I'm wrestling here, because I come from the finance world, and I assume that's where you go to get your $400,000. Businesses.
Foundations.
Foundations.
And businesses, yeah. But they have, their funders are, so they've got Kellogg, they've got Annie Casey, and then because of Delaware and all the businesses in the finance district that's there, they do tap into the banks. They also tap into, for example, the real estate associations, because they're able to get more people ready with credit scores and going through them, so they get support as well that way. So it's a mix.
Well, I guess what I always struggle with is crossing the line. Why is this government? It feels like government is stepping into more and more these social services at all levels of government.
So I was, after a 30-year newspaper career, was laid off in 2008, a couple years after divorce, and I was trying to figure out a way, I was trying to figure out a way to keep my house, and took out an interest-only, you know, changed my refinance to an interest-only through Chase Bank. And so that worked for a while, but, you know, you don't wanna sit with an interest-only mortgage for too long. And now we're, now to the Obama administration. And I was, I would get occasional phone calls from some guy at Chase, from some manager, lender, loan officer at Chase, saying, "There's a program that might be right for you." Because I was, I guess I had some income at that point, and qualified for this new program that will help your situation. And I kind of ignore, I, you get into kind of a funk, you know? And I didn't respond, and after about the third or fourth call, I finally went down and met somebody, and sure enough, under the Obama administration, there was a program that I qualified for, that let me get back into a new loan. I think I was saying to get back into a new loan without any closing costs, maybe something like that, and the...
And an amortizing, rather than not just interest.
Well, it worked, yeah, yes, an amortizing one. It was actually a better, I think I actually saved like 10 bucks a month, but without paying principal. And the point, the point is, I was ignoring the advice, because I really didn't know, I felt like I didn't know which way to go, or where to turn. But finally, when I paid attention, there was help there. And so I can see that being...
I can build on that, so I understand where you're coming from. But I think sometimes our communities are stronger when you have public and private partnerships.
Well, I agree.
And that's what this really is. It's privately funded, public service. And the credit to the community is that, banks that have to meet their community's credit standards, realtors who wanna sell more homes, and auto dealers who wanna make sure that people don't default on their loans, it's a value add, and the economic impact for Delaware has been huge. And I would concur that it's not a bunch of government lackeys saying, "You wanna provide financial service." It's actually a proven private, public program.
You mentioned that it's been successful for Delaware. How have they measured the success?
So they have...
Credit scores, savings, people who exit the program.
Debt reduction.
Debt reduction. Annie Casey said, "You have to have X amount of dollars, X amount of consumers, X budgets completed, X this and that." And anytime they don't meet the metrics, they run out of potential funding.
And so I would say too, so I come from the global humanitarian field, which is very exacting around, you mentioned evaluation and data, and so of all of the programs that I've seen nationally, that I've put a finger into, the Stand By Me program's data and their collection and evaluation of how, where their success is, is some of the highest caliber that I've run across. I mean, they have monthly meetings with their coaches where it says, "Okay, you have to be meeting these criteria," like any client portfolio, or like a lender would have, "with your clients." And if they're not meeting it, then they talk to them, they figure out why, and they make changes. So they're, it's a pretty incredible system.
Well, and I don't disagree at all, it's a huge need, especially in Oregon, where we don't teach any kind of financial livelihood, living level of finances in basic school systems. So, you know, I'm all for that, and see the need, I'm just trying to figure out the best way. And I know we're off-handed, as far as Lincoln City could come up with $500,000.
I'm unashamedly...
Are you alive as well, just putting it out there?
I'm unashamedly a Lebanese businessman, it's like, if you got a 500K sitting around...
It's not crazy, so, yeah.
So, you know, and I think of who benefits from, certainly the individual, but also businesses benefit too.
I think no matter where it's placed, whether it would be with a COG, or if it's sat with a different kind of agency, the beauty of having it being with an umbrella agency is that instead of it just being focused on one sector, so whether it's Head Start, or, you know, whether it's seniors, that embed coaches of all of those, but the administration is kind of at a broader level. So, I'm not saying anything you don't already know.
No, no, I like you, I like, I like where you're going with your thought process, and this is what was challenging to us, is who sustains it? If it's a public sector, well, then you have this problem of competing budget interests, right? And who, do you have $500,000? No, right? That's not our job. The interesting thing is the private sector, because they know at any time, private sector funding can just dry up, but it's not, because they're getting something out, right? They're getting a lot of, they're getting more than the state's getting out. And we met with the realtors, I'm not justifying it, I just found this interesting, is we had a roundtable with realtors and title companies, and some housing, and some housing folks, and they're like, "Okay, we love it." Because what happens is, they know that when you're gonna apply for that housing loan, you're more stable than the typical person who comes in, you're not gonna default. They love selling houses to these folks.
Well, they would get clients who weren't credit-ready, and they say, "Go through this program."
Yeah, they say, "Go through the program."
So it expands their potential market.
Yeah, and it's interesting, when you look at their funders, it's like Barclays, Bank of America, it's a default issue, I think is big for them. And Delaware's much like our region, it's had its ups and downs, it's manufacturing, it's agriculture, it's got a coast. Have you ever been to Delaware?
I grew up in Pennsylvania.
Oh, Delaware, right, you went to Wilmington, which is actually a great little town these days.
Oh, sure.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sure, yeah, you're from the eastern shore. Yeah, we were...
35 miles from Delaware.
Yeah, we were, we were great buddies at one time, right there. So that's Stand By Me, I'm sorry, Meals. So Meals on Wheels is funded, it's a unique program. So we're funded through the state and the federal government at about 1.2 million a year. That's what we get. That doesn't cover all the needs, right, of the community you know, that's nothing that you don't know. So we're about, what we can tell is we're not touching about 4,000 to 6,000 seniors across the region. We just don't have the resources. So it's expected, you have the fundraising, you do outreach, and that's what we ask the cities. So there's nothing that you need to do, it's volunteer-driven, our meal managers do their best for 17 hours a week, because it's not full-time. It's a great program, it's stable, it's hard to run, because obviously, it's always, always lagging, but we have a gap to close, and anything that you can think of to help us close it, we just need to do that. And it's a competing resource with everybody else, but it's, until the federal government stops funding it, we have a base amount of dollars. And that's again, about a million regionwide. And that feeds 3,000, 4,000 a year consistently, every day. So, one meal guaranteed, and the checkups that we, that we talked about. So I'll take...
Meals on Wheels, is every day, right?
In different locations, we have anywhere from three to five days a week, depending on the locations across, and then across the region.
We were reminding you some years ago, but then we leave extra food on a Friday.
So there is coverage for holidays, they also have emergency frozen dinners for, if there's a climate weather coming up, they can kind of preempt that a little bit by sending people home for extras, or delivering extras.
Probably the thing you could help us, the only thing, and it's nothing that you have to do, but anybody who, so I can just take them to hospital, drive them to hospital. So one of the things that's really important for us is that, if you have any interactions with them and Samaritan, is often they just check people out, and they don't have a support system. We have a lot of that. So, "Great, you're healthy, we're gonna send you back to your cold house without food." And we like to have kind of a hospital-at-home continuum, so I would just, maybe, help us if you see any of that happening. And hospitals are not big on supporting this, because they don't, that's not their job, right? Their job is to get you healthy, but then we don't want them to go back and self-help them.
Well, actually, I'm on the health district, so I haven't come back.
That'd be great.
They get evaluated on unless reimbursement, if that patient comes back.
Yes.
So there is a motive for them.
There is a motive.
One just has to...
Yes.
Know the right lever, so to speak.
Yes, one of their 13 criteria, absolutely. We still have some administrators who are not as helpful. Somebody has to pay for the service, somebody has to make sure we can do the outpatient, somebody has to, you know?
Because two in Lincoln County are under the same CEO.
Yeah. So I'm just posing that that would be where our gap would be, especially on...
Just information.
Lincoln County, that you might have folks who just don't see anything, and they go home, and they're hungry. We just wanna make sure we cover that.
Do they work with, you know, these agencies, AEG and Wisely, this one called Palpatins, which is a different, you know, the home care aides for a load of people? I wonder if somebody would work with them.
Do we certify the home health care?
Yeah, we pay them. But Meals is a little separate, yeah, it has to be delivered in a...
Lemon, that's part of the hospital-at-home, it's in tracking, that's a natural, yeah.
Economic development, looking with Allison, I think Phil.
Yeah, so we, thanks you guys, we now help manage your revenue loans, and if the stuff we do, we...
That's been a huge, great change.
Have we been helpful?
Very, very helpful.
Good, I think we should conclude this meeting before we find out stuff that we... It's a great program for us. Yeah, so we do that in Lincoln City, plus we have dedicated Lincoln County Economic Development Funds to build small businesses. So we have economic, we have a loan fund from Lincoln County that we can build a small business, like it's $300,000 to $500,000, plus we have marketing dollars. So if you need Sandra to come out, our loan officer, if you ever have a small business, or you wanna start a small business, and you can't get a business loan from a bank or need support, let us know.
Just actually starting up the, give them out to the new toy store that's going in over by Sal Shand, that shop I said...
Oh, really?
Yeah, we also did the brewery.
Yeah, brewery.
Beach West.
Beach West. Yeah, that's our latest.
So you're coordinating with the Small Business Development Center, Dave Price?
We do coordinate with Dave Price, we coordinate with Caroline Bowman, we work directly with Wissa Dodd, pressure hunt is kind of, his portfolio is he comes from, we work with him, we work with the banks on the coast. So we have seven revolving loan programs, one of which is Eurocity Dollars. We can provide microloans, we can provide construction loans, we can provide loans to disadvantaged or minority of businesses, just depending on some criteria. You have to create jobs, and you have to retain jobs, that's our only, that's a federal requirement.
So, define jobs. Any job, a job is a job is a job?
Job is a job is a job.
Or is it salary based?
Nope, job is a job is a job, you just can't lose them, you gotta retain them, and they cannot be contracted. So, it's like, for SBA loans, it's like one for every, I think $75,000 is invested, you have to have one job.
Is that a job is a job is a job? Is that something that was determined here, or locally, or is that something that came from the feds?
So, big construction loans, that's fed. Lincoln County is less restrictive. So we can fund things, and that's most of the collateral. That's not necessarily job-based, it's, can the loan guarantee its itself?
Okay. The reason I ask that is that in other places I've worked, as we've used city funds, a job wasn't a job all the time. It was income-based, it was what the salary that was paid, and you could get a benefit, you would get a benefit if you paid a certain salary.
I don't believe we have that, I can check with Sandra, I don't believe we have an income-based. I think it's kind of position-based.
Okay.
And so, again, our funds are fungible, is that we can use agricultural funds, Lincoln County funds, EDA funds, and build projects for you.
Do you have any kind of businesses that would not be eligible?
Yes, so anything that's federally restricted, so even though the state says pot's legal, you can't fund it. Gambling, churches, let's go down brothels, for some reason, that's not defined in the law.
Sin, basically.
Yeah, anything that you would think we couldn't fund, we couldn't fund. Yeah, can't provide anything for marijuana, definitely.
But no kind of rule that how it affects businesses and community is going to be competing?
Well, again, so, maybe depending on what you're asking for, generally, no.
Here's the scenario.
No, it's just a question that comes up.
Are you starting a business? Are you starting a brothel?
No, well, you look, for example, that, we did a, we did a business gap analysis about three years ago, that looked at what types of businesses are we missing here? And it could set up the basis that says, "We want to focus our economic development in these areas," but we haven't gone down that road. So you end up with saying, "Okay, this business may develop, but it might compete directly with a business that's already in town." And sometimes that can be an issue. So, being coastal, and being, I would say, Ron points out, for community to our size, we have a lot of eateries, and up and down the coast. And that leads to me, food waste, lots of food waste, and groceries. So you have all this either aged-out food, or whatever, that just goes to waste. So, other places must have that same issue, or what do you do, or is there a better thing to do, put it that way, a positive? Because that's what I'm looking for, is how do we turn what we just naturally do here, tourists and entertainment and food and eat, but they waste a lot, so how do we turn that waste into something worthwhile and job creates?
This is a story, this is a scary project. Did you talk to the tribe about this before Stewart left?
Yeah.
You did, okay, I know where this is going.
I did not.
We've talked to the tribe as well. So, on the coast, because of the, your biggest producer is casino, they have a lot of waste. So I think the tribe at the time, I don't know if it's still true, was thinking, "Is there an economic opportunity here?" Yes, there is. So Las Vegas does this, this is big, where you have big institutions that have like buffets and a lot of food. So I think a couple of the casinos tour and food waste into animal feed, recycle, fertilizer, and we were going down the path with the tribe at the time, figuring out if there was something viable, but the conversation stopped. So, yes, it's capital-intensive, so the product is there, it's the processing that's missing. And I think at the time, it was, you know, you'd have to build a facility, you'd have to determine what you're gonna do with it, and it was in the magnitude of millions, but do it, definitely. and it was in the magnitude of millions, but do it, definitely. Yeah, so we'd be happy to be part of that conversation. I think at one time the tribe talked about it, it'd be something that they would fund, which they could do. But I think we could probably work with business organ on something like that.
It just seems, you know, that often we work too hard to bring something to the coast with this vision that we ought to have and forget to look at what we already have here and are sending to landfill in this case.
I just saw a great story, I think it's MGM. So they take their food waste, they process it, it turns it up on food, feed sadly. Then they use the pigs back in the process. And so it's a continuous, now almost zero cost way for them to keep their chain moving logistically. So they don't ship it out, they feed their livestock, they give it to growers for produce, then it comes back.
As bacon.
As bacon or as popcorn, whatever they want, but it's a way, it's a cheaper way of processing their waste, absolutely. So yeah, so we don't have the capacity, we can help talk about it.
Yeah, that's all right. I'm thinking, to me, it's kind of one of those regional things that, you know, some brains getting together and saying, if we could do something regional.
Capitalize.
Yeah, so somebody knows how to do food processing and capitalizing.
Pay for the building.
Pay for a building. And then what do you, what do you do once it's developed? I mean, there's also been conversations on the coast about bio-waste, bio-waste, what do we do with that? I know Tleja and Celeste were talking about it. Also for, as you know, we have a machine on the coast with spray of waste on fields. This is something that can be trucked, something like that. And you know, we've tested this, I think we had conversations with the city managers about, not everybody thinks the problem is a priority equally. Everybody has a problem and it's not an equal problem for everybody. Cost is pretty high. We had talked about, for example, Corvallis was very interested in what the coast would do because they have problems with their facilities as well. So waste, bio-waste, yeah, I mean, these are topics that we can, we can tackle. We just gotta have your staffs willing to jump in and we can figure out how to.
I believe to say that in that discussion that we had, we are, and Lincoln City is actually ahead of the game because we've started going away and we have completely gone away from the spraying three years ago. So our waste out goes to landfill, cellar waste, cellar waste, sanitary sewer waste. And we are just one step, it's expensive step to turn it into fertilizer. I don't know that we'll ever reach that point, but it's closer than that. So we ended up actually doing that out of necessity, we just simply lost the fields.
Oh, yeah.
There wasn't anybody to take it. We still have two lagoons that are filled and waiting for us to clean them out.
So regional energy production, regional fertilizer production, these are all things that you could consider. It's just again, we would capitalize it, how would be water supply, zero.
Moving to a county wide or a regional county, trying to look ahead thirty, forty years. Water, water needs, like we don't there.
It's kind of funded to rebuild those. Would you, would you, what's the worst?
That's, well, that's, yeah, that's probably part of the.
That there reinforced dam, is that?
So to answer the, part of the question is, we have a five-year economic development plan that we're supposed to produce. It's under our Economic Development District. For those of you who have not attended the Economic Development District meeting, they're very exciting. We talk a lot about what the future is. We will come back out in the next year and talk to the communities about what you see your five-year vision is. But the most important thing about the plan is it's the way to access federal dollars. So if you don't have a plan, you can't get the money. And you have to say, hey, COG, does our project meet some federal guidelines? And they'll say yes, and then you get money. So projects that we've done in the past have been when Newport was gonna do their logging facility, that was actually a terminal, that was actually funded through the Economic Development Administration, which is us. And these tended to be bigger projects, these two. And then their new Pier Six rebuild is through EDA, that's another project that we worked on. So if you have ideas, there might be economic development administration dollars, planning, you wanna plan for something like a gap analysis, let us know. We've been pretty silent recently on funding and we need to get back in. We can do plans, we can do projects, we can build things like business incubators. You just have to have a solid project.
So staying kind of regional stake with transportation and the act, area commission on transportation, the COG staffs assist in that area. Is that, I guess I've not recognized where we live with Highway 101 through our main street and struggle with congestion and, you know, last club, we of course advertise to bring more people here and add to the congestion. But as a result, we've, we've got transportation plans, master plans, you know, for alternative streets or trying to bleed off some of the congestion. Cities don't build streets, developers build streets, but yet, you know, sometimes cities need to prime the pump, so to speak. And we, the loan we tried, or the grant we just tried, bridge, bridge grant, not bridge. You know, for the road.
For foothills?
Yeah, for foothills. We applied a couple of years ago to federal, the big, national.
Oh, Tiger Grant?
Yeah, but it's, it's different for roads, but the Tiger Grant. Are the things we're missing to help find, tap into, you know, and ODOT's been helpful, but trying to work around, listen to.
Might be the first person who said that.
Actually, they have been good to us.
That's great.
So you're asking, I think you're asking if there's more we can do with the act.
I'm, well, I don't, now I'm selfish, I'm looking for Lincoln City. So what I'm looking for is venues, avenues that, that, you know, that we're missing the ODOT, trying to tap into that we've seen.
So I would absolutely have Ron be hesitant, so I'll just talk to Phil about transportation options and try to make sure that you're aware of all of the grant opportunities and we can help you with those. So to also to be honest with the act, sadly, the acts are not empowered to be as local as they should be. And we're trying to push them to be more about regional planning versus just prioritization of projects. So the acts, the area commissions on transportation, there's a big pot of dollars at the state for Connect Oregon dollars and then everyone throws in their projects and the act prioritizes, right? That's really all they do. We want them to do more and we identified recently that we don't have a sound vision for what the region looks like for transportation at all. We have our Albany and Corvallis and then we have the act. And everything else, we don't know. And we're gonna, we're asking ODOT to help us get your needs into the act so we can start better prioritizing projects. So that's the first step. We're not saying we have local dollars, but we're saying that the act doesn't know what Lincoln City needs unless you're asking for a big range project. Otherwise.
Or are individual projects that we've put through STIP?
Yeah, STIP, and it has to be regionally, you know, it has to have some competition.
Exactly.
So unfortunately, the way, here's your two second program on federal transportation dollars. Unless you're under an NPO, Metropolitan Planning Organization, your money all goes to the state. And we have, for twenty years in DC, we advocated to create rural transportation planning organizations to help rural counties get their own dollars. We've been unsuccessful. So most likely you deal with the state. We're trying to get the act to be like a rural planning organization, which could say, you have some local streets, you need some planning dollars, let's figure out some safety issues, ODOT, this is our part of it. So you're not missing anything because nothing exists yet. But on the bigger projects, like federal highway dollars, federal transit dollars, if you think you are, make sure that we get our planning staff with you guys. I think I answered your question. I don't know what you're missing, cause I think what you need, and I think that's a conversation between Ron and our staff.
Why sit on the act and have for last?
But I think specifically it's better for us to talk to you about your projects.
And that's the piece that's missing for me.
Yeah, the act is not gonna be the venue.
Well, it's gotten worse, as you pointed out, with the 217 legislation where they took their own legislature, took their own projects and funded and left us. So I'm not happy with that. So I'm trying to do my own hand around.
Got to do what you gotta do. Corvallis got a bridge. There you go. And you have a senior member on the Transportation Committee who maybe should have gotten some of the projects. So yes, we understand that, we understand the weakness of the act. Let's make sure if you have critical, either economic development or federal highway projects you need to look at, we can do that. Absolutely, that's what we're there for, a hundred percent.
What are we missing? When you look at your region that we call in three counties and there's a little Lincoln City out there.
We have to have a housing conversation, we have to have a connectivity conversation. And I think currently the three counties are not united. While we are, I don't think that we fully yet understand that Lincoln City is part of an ecosystem that stretches all the way to Sweet Home. We don't yet see that. I have like, I have, excuse me, I have officials in the valley who are always surprised if people commute to Newport. Why would they do that? It's like, well, because of housing or because of desire to live or people in Newport can be to, or people in Lincoln City commute. So I don't think we're missing anything. I think it's incumbent upon all of us to think about what we could do better together through COG. When you sit on, you know, you come to a meeting, I would say, don't be silent and you never are, which would be, we need to, we need to be pushed to be more connected, we need to be pushed to do better economic development. I would say candidly, on the record, our, our greatest failure was that three years ago, we attempted to launch a regional economic development organization and we, at the request of a lot of our elected officials, and we only got three quarters of the way there and they lost interest. And it saddened me because we're the only region in the state that doesn't have that. So we do it all separately. So you have.
There's five of them, aren't there all together?
Fourteen of them, either publicly or privately funded and they all compete. And in our region, what we fail sometimes to understand is that it's, we're all connected. We're really more connected than any other region in the state. People who think they come to the coast for a weekend, they'll think of it as being part of the region. It is, you're driving forty minutes to have an economic activity or to stay the weekend or you have a house here or you're going back for a job. So work balance, economic balance is really important for the COG, for us to keep pushing that is that, don't just think of it as Lincoln City, you should think of yourselves first. However, you're very, as you know, connected to Salem, you're connected to Newport, you're connected to Corvallis, to Tillamook County. How do we do that better? That's the only piece that I think we've not excelled at. And we want to continue to push that conversation, which is how can regionally we help Lincoln County be more sustainable and be healthier? How can Lincoln County help its neighbors be more sustainable? And I still think we're a little bit, my own opinion, not the opinion of the COG board, we're still a little fractured around. I think we could do that. I don't see the coastal economy as being that much different than the valley economy. I see them being complementary. That's the great thing about the region is we're not competing against each other, we're complementary. I have a manufacturing county, I have a natural extraction county and I have an education county, right? I've got OSU, I've got big manufacturers and I've got ten billion dollars in economic activity in fisheries and timber. And also in, this is our tourist company.
And tourists on the other end of the valley.
And so they're not competing, I think they need to all be complementary to each other and look to attract businesses that can help each of the counties. Fish people is my big love, you know, fish people. We help start fish people. So they get fish from the coast, they process, they ship to the valley, they're distributed in the valley. So there is a small company that's now growing to be a national brand out of California with base in Newport, a base in Portland, a base in Salem that employs this kind of iterative economy through the valley. And go and now you see their products at Frontline. That to me is exactly what we should be doing. So I don't know if that helps.
I think that's the only place we ever interact though, is at COG. That's it.
I mean, we have the regional mayor's meeting and I don't think, nothing prohibiting you.
Right.
We always encourage greater, you know, collaboration, you know, legal cities. No, it's not easy. It's, but it's something we could do, I think we could do better. Well, we have a big economy in the valley, it's way bigger than people think it is. There's billions and billions of dollars that are generated here. Here, Lake County, I mean, I have, I have five hundred million dollar seed companies in the valley that nobody knows about. They just quietly, you know, fishing quietly do their business. We have startups that are huge, quietly doing their business, we don't really build on them. I think we need to be more evident about what's important to us and then work together and figure it out. We have a big workforce component that we need to talk about, housing, obviously transportation. I wish I could meet representative cooperative needs and not getting rail, you know, commuter rail to the coast. We are, we do, we just got funded to do a seamless transit study. So we're gonna actually be building an ecosystem for buses to do, to go across the three counties, one fair, known headways. So we're gonna try to reduce the time it takes you to get from any one of our communities to any one of their communities and hopefully that'll be a benefit to you as well. Now it takes six hours to get from Sweet Home to Newport, just to Newport. So you go with Celeste. But and we want to, because of our limited highway capacity, we want to do more transit-oriented development. We want more buses, faster buses, more parking lot. That's gonna be the way we get out of our street problem. What are we missing? Are we, do you think we could do more of? Do you, some, some people wanna see us less? They're good for a year, like just come back next year.
I thought we had a great relationship. Yeah, it's been good. It's more for me, you know, what we don't know. And so that's why I appreciate these and a good reminder of what the COG's about and where we and how we've tapped into it.
You know, we're a sandbox really, I think of a place that you can play safely. Test some ideas, think about ideas, think about concepts. If it doesn't work, who cares, right? If it does, great, you're successful. So any, any idea is good to toss out. I think at council meeting, if you have an idea, sometimes I get the phone calls, hey, we have an idea. We'll never say no. We will try to dissuade you, but we'll never say no. Yeah, so my passion, creating a stronger economy, I think that's health, that's food, that's services, that's meals. I mean, if you don't have healthy economies, you don't have healthy people, that's just the spectrum. So what we can do to help you with that and be partners with the body to do. So also, when you think about roads, you know, the big intermodal facility in Millersburg is, you know, been moved forward. And that means that we're gonna have, and then basically Newport and those were about I-5. And we like our communities to be more connected so we can talk about freight movement and goods movement and even tourism, getting trucks off freeways and better train access and those kinds of things. This is a twenty-year vision of more integrated transportation in the valley and on the coast.
I was aware of what intermodal facility is, I had to ask as well, so basically.
Sorry.
I'm just kind of.
Yeah, you're just going, you're doing all the yeses, you're going, yeah. I built that, that's funny.
Instead of semi-trucks, tons and tons of semi-trucks on I-5 going up and down, transporting between Eugene, Roseburg, Salem, Portland, all the way to Seattle. You now have a facility that they can directly offload their cargo and put it on rail. And so it's.
You have it California, don't you?
Big.
Okay, that's your say, I'm like, I'm thinking, that's what you asked.
So Portland stopped years ago shipping, they've shut their shipping containers down, there's no. So Portland stopped years ago shipping. They've shut their shipping containers down. There, there's no shippers going out of Portland. So if you have seeds or goods or critical cargo, you go to Southern California, you go to Oakland, or you go to Sea-Tac. Or we've had shippers who even go to Houston, or New Orleans, or Long Beach, or New Jersey. So because of Portland, because we don't have container, container facilities anymore, we have to, we have to truck it or train it to most likely to Seattle. And then you have a headway problem of trucks just piling up at the port of entry waiting to get in. So cost, cost delayed until later. We're the only state, we're the only state in the Pacific that doesn't have a working port facility.
Why is related to the issues with the workers?
Union issue, cost issue.
It was three, five years ago, but that was-
They had a big long shortening, strikes, yeah.
Because I know our stores had problems with-
Yeah, Stephen Dor strike, couldn't figure it out.
And I don't mean to say it was, it was the workers' fault. That's not, I want to just clarify. It was, it was an issue between the communication, between union and everyone else, and they couldn't make it work. They really just couldn't.
Between Port Florida, I don't think anybody was ready to all, they couldn't manage union relationships and we lost all information. I'm really interested, not to take any more of the time, but I've been kind of toying with the idea about tourism in communities like this and getting a better sense of how other communities around the country deal with this. So like the, the kind of tourism that's coming, the kind of tourism that you want. And I was thinking of maybe getting our community colleges together, kind of host a forum on tourism. I'd love to see what Aspen and, you know, Maine, coastal Maine has done in places in, you know, like the coast in Ireland and-
If you're going to do that, you have got to have a trace that involved. He is our ex-mentee, so you visitors can have him here directly.
So I'm not, I'm not going to do it. I'm interested in your thoughts about it because I, I think there's a lot of missed tourism opportunity as well.
In terms of, of marketing or where do people come from?
Yeah, so what, what we found out about coastal tourism is that it's usually day trippers. So that means usually that the amount of dollars spent for the amount of services that are required are less. So if you get a Monterey versus a Newport, for example, I mean, you're getting thousand-dollar night stays versus fifty-dollar night stays. You're still spending the amount of resources. So it was really just a question about how newer markets or markets that are established, how they're dealing with the kind of tourism influx and what they expect and what you need to break even, and is it really still valuable? It's just, it's an interesting concept to me. You know, I grew up in, I grew up in Santa Fe, which is, Santa Fe, I mean, that's what we do. It's tourism. And they've always struggled with who, how, when, why, support, the cost.
You know, and, and an interesting aspect of that that you have to look at with each organization, with each community, is what is their tax infrastructure like?
Yeah.
If you have sales tax, there's nothing better in the world than day trippers.
Yep.
We don't have sales tax.
Right.
So our emphasis is on heads and pets.
Right.
Because of the transient room tax. And so your tax structure will dictate a lot in what you do and to whom you market. And it's, it's really a key part of what we look at as far as people coming in to the city.
No, not really. Just the other related thing that everybody wrestles with is the workforce housing.
Yes.
Because we have a lot of modest paid jobs in the service industry. No place for them.
Yeah, that's really a part across the region. Have a look here, let's step back a little bit.
So we were asked under, we have special projects from the board approved, and what they actually asked us recently was a project around housing to survey our communities and figure out what exactly it is or could be the COG's value add. And we talked about that at our, our most recent board meeting. And what has, we kept the number of solutions in our report out based on the data. And one of the things that our board has said is that we want the COG to be able to be the house that collects data about housing. So because one of the things is some communities in our region have information housing, but a lot of them don't. And combining it with a combination of like what our, you know, land inventory as well as what are, what's the difference between your needs for workforce housing versus other housing. And so having us be the database repository and updating that information on a regular basis. So we're looking into that right now. So that is one way that we are going to be able to provide down the road some services around housing. It doesn't help with the immediate need right now, but it can hopefully help predict and inform decisions down the road.
You know, if you add to that, there's another, there's another element that we can't seem to find anywhere, including the foreign house. And that is what actually works. Mayor Anderson has asked this question on several occasions, that we have put a lot of things in place that theoretically should help to reduce prices. But there's not a single person who's taken advantage of it. The county has just finished a housing plan, and one of the questions that the mayor asked during this is, can you identify where this is actually working? We now have that plan, but that, that doesn't exist. And so one of the challenges that we have is we put a lot of things in place, but we don't, for some reason or another, we don't see people taking advantage of that. And so they look good on paper, but they're, they're really not coming to fruition. And we don't know if that's because we don't get it out well enough, if it's not market supported, people really don't want it. So it's, that's a challenge.
There's a weird, it's a weird housing market in Oregon. Demand is high, supply is low, and capitalism would tell you, you should be flooded with developers.
Correct.
Not at all.
An aspect of this that I'm just getting educated on, I hadn't really heard much about until we started having, well, I just, council for six months and learning a lot as we go. This is business of, it's hard for builders to find the workers they need, the skilled workers they need. You know, we have, we have kids coming out of high school without skills, and if they had the job skills, maybe the developers could find the workers. They have to import workers to come down here to build the houses, which makes, it increases their costs. And then they evidently can't command the, the rent that they need to make their costs justify. So they go, why bother? You just won't build.
It's a, it's a cycle, but I, I would give back, and that, because they have the same problem even in Portland, where there is at least more workers to do. But my, my point is all across the country, you know, we, we've had this list of ways to penetrate housing, styles or programs or whatever. And they do sound good, and you get all excited about it. But I've never seen, you know, unless it's a loan program, you can med it. But something to do with a, you know, whether it's cottage housing or ADU, ADUs, all these kind of things. How many, you know, and where? And that's, that's the piece that I'm looking for. Consultants just want to give you this litany of things, and you can pull it out of any housing of old. But never is there, this is where we're delivering, for example. This is what they did and how many. It's just hard.
You mentioned ADUs. A friend of mine in town here complained to me, I had this conversation, we were going to the tribal council meeting today, that homeowner, if you have a property, you've got some room in the back, I can't, I want to build a, a mother-in-law unit. And he says, I can't do that in Lincoln City. I said, I'll, I'll look into that. And I, the answer is, yeah, you can. This is a guy with some money and, who's been around town for a long time, and he's not aware. I'm talking about the disconnect between the programs and the people who might actually pay to use them.
So you got a guaranteed loan. I mean, that's one of the cues. I'm not a housing expert at all, but I probably agree that unless you have loan programs or incentive programs or tax programs, you can, I think what's happening in the valley is, any builder, I mean, I can go to the valley and build a house, get seven hundred thousand dollars for it. What's my incentive?
Right.
And we're not building enough to pull those prices down. I mean, that's the first piece, the worker piece, the land piece, the cost of building in Oregon. It's a tough market. The, the one thing that helped Oregon is in 2008, it didn't really crash as much as it could have because of enough housing. There wasn't housing being built. But we've never, we accelerated that to start meeting the needs.
Housing hasn't, didn't take us out of the recession like other recessions.
Like Florida and Arizona where it just crashed.
And I think nationally, we've cut back on, of housing philosophy. Homeowners isn't what it once was.
Yes.
A lot of the federal programs been cut back. And that fed your low incomes, that's what happened.
We talked about can the three counties work together to incentivize large-scale develop, one large-scale developer building multiple units, so.
In, in different locations?
In different locations. Because one of the problems is, you know, why need five houses in the development? Like, that's not worth my time, right? If, if they could get fifty in Lynn County and fifty in Corvallis and fifty on the coast, well, now that one developer is getting a return for their money. I don't, you know, there's nothing that prohibits us, prohibits us from doing that, but I think that's the counties to decide whether they can invest in land thinking or incentives. Because I, I think also it's that, you know, we need 500 units of workforce housing, but that's two high-scale houses. That's the cost of two high-scale houses. Why would they, why would they do that? Lynn County's having another problem. I mean, mid-to-high-end housing is lacking in, in Lynn County. That's one of their biggest problems. And Corvallis is just housing, housing. So we, we, we looked at Zillow data, we looked at Redfin data, we looked at other data about housing costs across the region, and found some really strange things. So normally it does this, so you have the job center, and the housing gets cheaper as you move away from the job center. In our three counties, it stays relatively flat out. So housing is equally per capita as expensive in every county. So SIO is as expensive as Newport, and Brownsville is as expensive as Lincoln City. So what then happens is there's no incentive to move anymore. You can't then say, oh, well, Brownsville has property, we'll just build our homes. No, they're going to be as, as expensive as living in Albany. So it's weird. So it changes the commuter shut up, it changes the balance. And our view of housing is, we have to have a transportation discussion and economic development discussion. We're going to get out of this with things like rideshare, park and ride, transit, where we can start moving populations around. So no one community is saying, I have to have 10,000 units. There's five here, there's 20 there, and let's get people moving. Let's get your housing built out, but maybe you can't absorb it. But maybe so let's camp. Let's figure out how to balance that. So we're doing park and ride studies, we're doing a transit study, we're working with housing D and S, so hopefully all of this will help, help you make decisions.
So you, yeah, because felt best, I was going to say you've better than Lincoln County housing strategy.
Yes. For maintain that. Oh, we're also your census folks now. Sorry. I forgot, boy.
Complete count committee is us.
Yes, so we've now been funded by all three counties. We have a staff person who will work with your committees, your cities, any groups that you work with, your chambers, to provide you the information to get out and complete count. I don't know if somebody's already been here to talk to you about this. So if you don't count enough people, you lose money. It's about $3,000 a person for every person that's not counted. So if you miss a, you miss an apartment complex, you could lose $100,000. Oregon's also looking to get a new congressional seat, so if we don't count, Oregon doesn't get one, right? So I think it's Pennsylvania and Michigan and Ohio are going to lose, Texas and Oregon are going to grow. So, surprise, we're now your complete count committees. We have a staff person who will talk to you, they're going to survey you, they're going to come out and say, hey, who do we need to talk to in your community? They'll come and talk to you. Then committees that you're on, where we can get information, the senior centers, veterans outreach, wherever we can work with you. But we're going to rely a little bit on you to tell us where to go. And then we're going to come with the information, we're going to help you figure out how to do complete counts. And Oregon's very focused on hard account. So that's homeless, seniors, students. Here's the fascinating thing. It's not where you reside on the day of the census, it's where you are on the day of the census. Bingo. That's where you reside.
Let's throw a party.
We are throwing a party.
Just let us know, we'll figure out something.
Yes. So people say, well, homeless don't have an address, it doesn't matter. You have to count every person who is in the United States, not who owns property.
Hot dogs. Kite Fest, kite festival.
Just give away food.
Glass balls on each, you know, do it all at once.
Oh, there you go. Wow, interesting.
I don't get that. Are we census, are we census by, I mean, don't we?
You do. You do, but you may not have a census tract, right? You may be, you may be indigent.
Most people, most people are going to get a ticket home, and if they happen to be vacationing here, it doesn't really matter, they're filling a form out at home.
If they're here and they fill out the form, they're counted here.
Is there some day or week or time span?
Maybe 100% occupancy.
So how come some people got mail terms and other people haven't got?
So the census is different this year, right? They're going to do less knocking on doors and more mailings and online.
Okay. Because my daughter got one.
Yeah, the methodology, their computer models are more refined.
So what are, what are communities doing for the, I, I know a number of people that wouldn't even know how to turn on a computer.
So schools, libraries?
Senior centers.
Senior centers, veterans?
Well, I, I understand, I understand getting the place open. Well, I mean, there's no problem with providing computers. How are you getting people to the computers?
Yeah, that's not my issue.
I'm telling you, that means, that's obvious.
I now have assignment for the library. This is right up their alley.
Stephanie Natta will be the person who's helping everybody, and she, Stephanie Natta, she'll be reaching out to all of our communities and pulling together meetings here in short order. We are asking all of our member jurisdictions to think about who's going to represent you on the complete count, complete count committee group. So all told somebody do.
Is, who's, we had a contact and they were trying to convince us that we needed to cover all of the publication and pay for all the ads to go in the paper and to do all of the, is, are, is COG paying for that? Or is the, are the cities supposed to be responsible for paying for the advertising?
That's right. There was a guy in town.
We've had a guy that's been here a couple of months trying to convince us to do.
Are you taking, are you, can you turn off the recording?
About five minutes, we can.
We'll, we'll talk to you about that. Well, so census is, technically census is supposed to provide us all the materials. So I don't know about ads, and I, I, I guess I'm not even sure that a newspaper could charge you for a census ad, maybe. Your newspaper, is that a public thing?
A newspaper.
Charge them?
Charge you, they will, yeah.
Yeah. I don't know.
To make money off the legal ads.
I haven't gotten that far yet. So I know that census gives us materials and will help the library distribute them, but we're not doing the groundwork. We're to help you figure out the committees that you need to empower to get stuff done.
So it could be advertised by radio as well.
And that's what you're going to tell us, and then we'll probably try to help, so.
Especially the focus on the hard to reach, so that that's in part like asking all of our, our member jurisdictions, all the three counties to say, who is it, what other organizations, that she will be asking you, say, what are the organizations in your neck of the woods that you guys need to engage, and how are we going to engage them and et cetera? So it's helping you guys think through all that, coordinating efforts, so.
So, Councilor Anthony, PREIA, the Roads and Improvement Association. We need to make sure that all of these second houses, they fill out their forms here.
I'll get on it. There is a person who-
Once I heard that $3,000 a person's house, and my, my ears just went straight up.
Better call Meredith Logic and have a special.
Oregon was severely under the census. This is the community spirit I'd like to see. How can we cheat other communities out of their census count by getting as many people here? For the region, we're going to get as many in here.
We're still reporting.
Do more regional collaboration. Well, Lynn County, for example, we're having a free party with hot dogs and beer on the census count in Lincoln City.
All of a sudden your population goes, phew.
Something about Lincoln City, you're like, no one else is like, oh, of course we've got to count veterans. You guys are like, everybody in the city. You guys are like, everybody in city.
Party.
Day tripper party, yeah. Twenty percent of Salem, but all of a sudden it's dropped in their count.
Yeah. Yeah, that'd be crazy.
So did I, though.
Yeah.
Including, I know.
There's a way we can make sure those illegal fireworks don't have benefits.
You hit certain population thresholds, and some things aren't happening.
Give them a hot dog and have them fill out their form.
Pretty soon you're doing air quality conformity, and then you're doing water treatment things, and, yeah, you want to just have about forty-eight thousand people. More than that, it gets a little dicey.
We get these FBI statistics that say Lincoln City's the most crime-ridden city in the country, because the-
Crime?
Per capita, yeah, yeah, because they, whatever the crime is, and then they say, but you're around populations eight thousand, or summer population's like forty thousand.
Oh, so it's a lot.
So we have a community that lost their HUD funding, because some guy built the house and skewed the, skewed the per capita income, one person, and so HUD came back and said, well, you're too wealthy of a community to get your HUD funding. They're like, wait a minute.
Median.